Ready to go. Right now. Stand for the pledge. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. I don't know if everybody knows that Jenny's absent tonight, so I'll wing it. So, uh, roll call, please.
Jenny David. Roger Mayhew. Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Present.
Craig Scott.
Here. Let me bring the meeting up here. Okay, uh, approval of the agenda, anybody got any additions, corrections, minuses? I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner. Third book, second by Commissioner Wiltie. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Nays. Anybody got a conflict with interest?
No conflicts.
None.
Aye, mine itself neither. Uh, review of minutes, January twenty, their meeting.
I've reviewed the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Wiltie. I'll support. Uh, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? February sixth, committee as a whole meeting. I recommend.
Review them.
Got them?
I got them.
Okay, I'll, I'll support. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Okay, public comment on agenda item matters. You guys have looked over the agenda, if there's anything on there you'd like to speak about?
We're sure about the flashlight right away.
Okay, well, uh, we'll get to the second comment and we'll listen to you. Anybody on the phone would like to comment on a uh, agenda item? Going once, twice, three times, okay? Uh, correspondence came in from Walt Vance, uh, some me- uh, meeting minutes. And also the city of West Branch had a public hearing notice to consider property tax abatement. The consent agenda tonight is, is, is one thing, it's the resolution to accept the consumer energy grant. You guys want to take them one at a time?
Uh, let's take them one at a time.
Okay, well, then in that case. Uh, let's see, consumer. You got it here for me to read, right? Yeah, this resolution sponsored by the Ogama County Special Housing Advisory Committee. The Housing Advisory Committee will sponsor an open house event on February twenty-six, twenty-five to promote networking of developers, grant agencies, housing advocates, and consumer energy has graciously offered a grant to offset costs associated with the event. Michigan statutes reserve the board to, uh, the authorities direct and provide for raising money necessary to defray the expenses and charges of the county. And acceptance of gifts, grants, policy, grants, policy requires board approval for all grants and gifts. Approval of this, of the resolution will authorize the acceptance of five hundred and fifteen dollars grant from consumers' energy to offset costs associated with housing committee open house. Board wishes to express its sincere appreciation to consumers' energy for their generous grant.
I'd like to make a motion for the resolution to accept the consumers' energy grant.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Wiltie, supported by Commissioner Third Book, uh, roll call, since we're accepting money.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes. Uh, claims, uh, I did look over the claims last week. Um, I didn't see anything that was way out of proportion. I'll make a motion to, to, uh, accept claims as presented.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Mayhew.
Didn't see anything?
I didn't see anything really out of the, out of the norm.
Mr. Vayster, you want me just to run over just the highlights?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I, cause I.
Your motion needs the number.
Huh?
The amount.
Oh, five, um, oh, uh, Commissioner.
Oh, sure.
You got it?
No, I don't have a, I don't have the total.
I got it right here.
All staring me in the face.
One hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and one penny.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, animal control, there was, uh, it was twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Then which was the monthly payment to the Ray Animal Shelter, um. Building and grounds was snowplopping with seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Indian Council, ten thousand and change. Uh, housing in the, uh, the counties for the jail, forty-nine thousand, two seventy-five. Register D's had a, uh, expansion, the automation front of twenty-one thousand, two fifty, which was an annual, uh, to
the, uh.
Fiddler.
Fiddler.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
The, um.
Yo, the county general, we had, um, for the audit. I don't remember what the figure on that was.
It was a payment on the audit.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I thought I wrote it down, but I don't see it right now, so. Anyway, transit, they're on the, their portion of for the audit, theirs was thirty-four hundred, thirty dollars. Um, Treasuries Office, ten thousand, eight seventy-two for title check. They have to send out all, post the postage for that, so. That was it, those are the highlights.
Yeah, well, and then indigent council, ten thousand is not out of.
No, no, I just, I just picked out the high dollar items, just to highlight. No, I know most of those aren't, you know, like said, there were annual fees and stuff like that. The same thing, I think, with that animal control, that's mostly corporations, so.
Any other comments on the?
But it's gonna be, or they just look at it and go, what, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, animal control, if they didn't know that was going to Ray Animal Shelter, they'd have some questions, I'm sure, so.
Right.
I just wanted to bring it up to see what that money was spent on, that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments on the claims? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Okay, um, any unfinished business of any sort? Um, let's see, something was in the minutes, um. Oh, nothing was, nothing was communicated to us from the sheriff's office, right? That's what might have come up.
Okay, administrator controller report, please. He's got the written report on the iPads. Um, and so I'm want to do, there was a report provided regarding the jail at one of the townships here in the last couple of weeks that was not entirely accurate. So again, to set the record straight, the, the statement was made that the jail was making money and particularly that, uh, commissary fund, uh, was making money. Fact of the matter is, and we've published this a few times now, uh, in the narratives as we've gone through the, the jail analysis. Over a five-year period from fiscal year twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three, actual revenue from the jail or generated by the jail fell by a hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars. Now, it is true that when we were running a twenty-four, seven facility, that there was revenue generated at commissary. The commissary dollars were used to offset expenses at the jail as they are supposed to be. Uh, but overall, the revenue declined at the same time expenses grew by six hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred seven dollars. So we have over, uh, seven hundred fifty, almost eight hundred thousand dollar swing there that the county general fund was having to pick up. So it is not accurate to say the jail was making money. And frankly, the jail shouldn't be set up as a money-making venture, that's not what it's for. Uh, but just to make sure that that record is straight, uh, it, it should not be thought that that jail was a moneymaker for the county. The second item was brought up, concerned, uh, bringing in inmates from other counties. It was stated if the county just would have allowed these contracts from Calcasas County to go through, then the county would have made more money. As we pointed out, the fact is, had that contract gone through, the county would have actually lost somewhere between fifty thousand and sixty-four thousand dollars annually because we would be subsidizing those inmates at the rates that were negotiated. So no, that's not accurate either. In fact, had the county entered into those contracts, the deficit situation would have been even worse than it was before the, the changes were made at the beginning of the year. Uh, I don't know that anybody at this table would have any questions about that, we've been over this many times. But I think it's crucial that when we, uh, get reports of inaccuracies out in the community, that we get it right on top of that and correct it. And, and that's the objective of reporting that. I am willing to field any questions you might have, other than that, that's my report.
I just have something I'd like to add to that.
Go ahead.
Um, Tim, could we, uh, that jail narrative that's been posted to the county website that we've tried to tell people to educate themselves on instead of just listening to what they're seeing on social media and what have you? Well, a lot of people still obviously don't take the time to do that. Um, is that, you know, there's something that you could send out to all the townships? Uh, just so the townships have that at their meetings, they also could let the people know that are there that, you know, please take the time to educate yourself on the facts. And the facts is why we have made these hard decisions over the last few years. I just, I think it would just help try to get that out there. I mean, there's still, you're always going to have that gap of people that just aren't going to take the time to, to educate themselves. But, I mean, anything we can do is going to help, so.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, something entitled, you know, please disseminate this information, I guess. I mean, how else? You know? It seems to be a question. Uh, I, I went to one township meeting and didn't even question it, but go ahead.
Did we get a new dog catcher?
That's a loaded question, kind of. Um, they, there was a, a tentative offer of employment that was made, uh, uh, to an individual highly qualified to do this. The, it's tentative because we're waiting on two things. Number one, the pre-employment physical that we require, uh, isn't in yet. And the second issue is our payroll individual is out and until we can get the individual put into the system. So next week, we should be on the road functional. Uh, there was some training that's, uh, was kind of, uh, initiated ahead of when it should have been, but, um, I, I'm actually um, very positive on the, on the bill they brought in to train our former officer to help, uh, bring our new guy up to speed. So it can't get better than that, he knows the county, he knows where, where the issues are. Uh, and so it's going to be real good training. So we're just in the starting blocks right now, next week we should be functional.
I was at a meeting last night and they told us we had one, I said, it's news to me.
Yeah. Yeah, we kinda don't have one yet, but next week we'll have one.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? Sure. I mean, I think it's great to see that there was an initiative to move this forward. The county passed this millage, that money has been accepted, a lot of the county residents have paid for it. So it's great to see that, and it does seem like the person that we have is definitely a person that, uh, we should feel really good about. It just seems like there's a few steps that need to get done, but like you said, next week, that person should be back where we need to be for training and, uh, get into that position as, as soon as the sheriff and under sheriff feel he's ready, right?
Right.
Good.
Any other, Ron? Any other comments, vote? All right, uh, thank you for your report. Back to that other page here. Okay, elected officials, department head reports, uh. Clerk, you're the only one here so far.
I have no update.
Okay.
I will, well, next week I won't be here, but Tim and I are working on something and he's, uh, um, he's gonna
Present.
Present it to you guys next week. The wrestling team are regional champs, so they're going to states and we're leaving Thursday, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
That's awesome.
Um, anybody, uh, Jeff Nichols, uh, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, um, on that grant that we've been trying to get, um, we came back denied. Uh, we had to take off the mechanical permit and the electrical permit. And I didn't get an answer back today from the representative whether we could have the deputy sign that paperwork or not. So I don't know if Jared heard anything back when I left the office, but, uh, we're going to send it back up and go for the signature. All we have to do is remove the, uh, two permits and make an adjustment to the amount and we're good to go.
Okay, well, thanks, Jeff. That's Jeff Nichols from the Ogama County Veterans Office. Any other department heads on the phone? No, okay. Uh, okay, uh, there is, uh, the building inspections, building grounds and IT gave us oh, and treasurer and sheriff and treasurer gave us reports, written reports. Matters on the floor. Nothing, motions for adoptions. Uh, okay, commissioner reports, we'd like to go first.
I can start.
Surely your name's all over everything.
Yeah.
Uh, Mills Township, we had our meeting this past Tuesday night. Um, they have put an offer on the old medical building, uh, which would be as you turn onto Red River Trail off of Greenwood, the medical building on the left. It's been vacant now for, I believe, a little over a year. Um, the township supervisor Bruce Beach spent a lot of time there, uh, meeting with contractors to get an idea what it would take to get that township ready. Um, I met the one day over there just to kind of take a look at it, it's a very nice building, very solid building. Um, the work that could be done to it could turn it into a great township hall. It's got a really nice parking lot, it's got four acres that, that acreage then would butt up to the Mills Township Fire Department. Across the road is the township park. Um, I think it's a really smart move, um, they put an offer in at, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, three weeks ago, it was countered at two twenty-five. But it sounds like that the, uh, the owners will take two hundred thousand, uh, probably looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in renovations. Plus or minus, it's in the long run, it would be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get the township hall where it needs to be. The plans they had to build a new one was, I believe, around the six to seven hundred thousand dollar mark. So I think it's a good move, I support their decision, um, and hopefully it all goes through and, uh, possibly by the end of the summer Mills Township has a new township hall. Uh, let's see, they are currently looking for an ordinance officer, which we all know is very important over in, uh, Mills Township. Hopefully we can find a good, strong ordinance officer and also a parks and rec supervisor. Uh, last couple of years, they've done a lot of work at the parks there. Uh, Mills Township has some beautiful parks, so that's another important position. Uh, DHHS meeting, we didn't have a quorum yesterday. Uh, before this meeting today, we had our opiate settlement committee, uh, it was another really strong meeting. Um, I think we just have an absolutely great group of people there. Uh, we had a little side committee this past month that they got together, these are all professionals in our county that are dealing with uh, different type of opiate issues. Um, they came back with a lot of really good information, uh, prevented, prevention programs, recovery community organizations, recovery housing. Um, and then this month we're going to discuss more regarding treatment. Uh, Tim said we have just over a million dollars in that account. Uh, we're going to find out where we'd be looking at for the next twelve months to twenty-four months of more monies coming in, so we can really try to start forecasting and putting out RFPs and try to start spending this money and spend it the right way because it is a very important situation and issue we have in the county. And we want to be able to create something that's going to have sustainability and, uh, make a big impact. So really looking forward to, um, next month and, and us continuing that. Um, last thing I want to state on, um, I talked about it at our, at our last meeting. Um, I, I greatly appreciate the opinions of, of all the commissioners. Um, I understand some of the commissioners' concerns with the Bass Lake Road right away. Um, one thing that I've always said, the two plus years now I've been a commissioner, that I'd never want to use personal feelings to decide anything that I do for the county. You know, I was put in place here, voted by the residents, make the best decisions possible for the county. But yet also, we're also here as a, I think, a voice and as a platform to support, um, our county in, in different areas. And one of these areas, if we have state land and federal ground, that is in Ogama County, and we have the possibility of losing that, I think that we should voice our opinion whether we support it or do not support it. So again, I, I appreciate everybody's opinion, but I've been extremely disappointed with some of the commissioners regarding their stance on that. Um, I don't want to get too long-winded on this, I know a couple of commissioners said, well, it'll start a precedence of everybody coming in. There's a big, big difference, we have a, a county resident come in and say they've got a, a problem with the twenty-foot easement on a lake that affects nobody but them. This situation affects hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of county residents. It affects businesses in the area, it affects people from coming out of town to spend money in our county that they can no longer use the state and federal lands. So it is a very big deal. And again, I'm very disappointed with the stance that some of these commissioners have taken. That's it.
Okay. Who's next? Roger?
I went to West Branch, uh, last night and that's when I heard about the dog catcher and, uh, they're pretty quiet there, they're having a deal with this cemetery, they want to make it seasonal.
Seasonal?
Seasonal because they don't want to plow and knock the grave markers over. And, uh, so that's their plan. I was at Rose Township and same thing, they're, they're pretty calm. They've been having a whole lot of trouble with, they call it Oak Road and Ogama Road. And their private roads and the county's was plowing them, county quit. It's it, it, it's ugly and like you said, you, you do it for one, you do it for all.
Oh, boy, I've been in a, I was at the road commission meeting when they all showed up.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, oh, boy.
And it, it's, it's wild and the way it is.
Glad you're not.
You can't make everybody happy.
By now.
That's it.
Clark?
I'm glad that you got to West Branch Township yesterday because I didn't. I was in Flint for an appointment and it went four hours longer than I thought it was going to and I didn't get home until like seven thirty last night. So I'm glad you were able to make it. Um, gee, since our last full board meeting, we had, uh, well-advanced community mental health, we have the report on our iPads. Commissioner Scott and I attended the Department of Health, number two meeting in Hale. Basically, they introduced us to all the, uh, directors, the finance director, the, uh, the grandma health director, the community health director, uh, the health officer, the deputy health officer. It was because there are new members on that board. It was basically an introduction and they told us what they did and what their backgrounds were and stuff. So other than that, there wasn't a lot of action taken, other than that we, and it was an organizational meeting, I was elected, uh, place chair. The chair is, uh,
Iasko.
Yeah, he's from Iskow. Went out of my head, I had it too. No, no, Jay's not on the board anymore. Um, the other one.
Terry Dutcher?
Terry Dutcher, thank you. Thank you. Um, and I got appointed to the water supply advisory committee, anyway, um. We all went to the strategic, except Roger, the strategic planning meeting there last Friday. Um, Charlie and I with budget advisory committee. I had Monday Horton and Edwards Townships. Both of those, the main point of their discussion was their budgets, because they're in the budget planning process, the budgets have to be in place by, I believe it's March the first. So they were diligently working on their, uh, their budgets. Craig and I did claims. Parks and Rec was supposed to have been a swim, but thank you for canceling that due to the weather. Um, and then as Bailey said, we had the opioid this afternoon, so that's been my two weeks.
All right, glad you're back.
Busy, busy, busy.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, in regards to the budget committee, and I know at our last meeting Commissioner David, you know, asked for more communication and transparency on that stuff. And, and obviously as much of that communication as we can get to you guys, the better. So, you know, we'll, we'll of course try to do better with that. But one big thing we did discuss is obviously the importance of that committee. I mean, that committee has done a lot of great things since it's been formed and, uh, we've been consistent with that. And the big thing that we also talked about is, you know, having the stakeholders accountable to be at that meeting, to be able to have open discussion, to be transparent. And that's how we're going to be able to continue to move forward and work things in this county. And again, you know, at the table, um, a department that takes up a large part of our budget, the sheriff department and the corrections, again, was not at the table. So I hope moving forward, get them back and it's not something in one, one month they're there and then back four months, we need consistency. We need to be able to, you know, continue to this direction we're heading, I think we've got great momentum. I think it was great to see the email that we got, um, from the auditors that, you know, there's a really good chance in the end of March when we get that final number, we'll have a fund balance for two thousand and twenty-four of, you know, six hundred and some thousand dollars plus. And that's why we've had to make these hard decisions, because we've had to, we got to figure out this financial situation of the county, which we, I feel we do have a good grasp on now. And it's just a matter of us all working together, we're not going to always agree, but we have to work together, we have to communicate. In order to do that, we have to show up to the table to be able to get things done. So, um, I got a little long-winded on that, but it, we, we all know the importance of this budget committee and we need the shareholders there because we still got a long ways to go. We're seeing the results of the hard decisions that we've had to make, but we've got a long ways to go. And in order to be able to create that sustainability, we have to, we have to find some way to be united um, and just keep heading in that direction.
Okay. All right, my turn. Uh, I went to Foster Township, nothing, it was a quick meeting up there. Um, I got there just a little bit late, but, uh, I gave a report. I had no questions, I was very, uh, surprised. They, their meeting is very well-attended. Uh, Mark talked about the Department of Health, uh, that was an interesting meeting. We got to hear from all these, it was a, a meet and greet kind of thing. I didn't, I didn't realize that there's two commissioners from each of four counties there. Now, Conan wasn't there, but, uh, Iasko and Iskota was. And I would have liked to have had some time to sit and talk with them afterwards. But, uh, I, I know that coming up, there will be time, um. Uh, yeah, Parks and Rec was this morning, but with the, with the winter weather and everything, and we really didn't have much for an agenda uh, this time of year, so I just let everybody know that we just canceled for this, this month. Um, can you, can you, can you continue to do the claims? I, 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 I like that, I like to do them in the wintertime for my turn, so. Um, your budget advisory committee, I see there's minutes on, on our iPads, I like that. Um, yep, uh, really, I didn't have a whole heck of a lot this, this month, so, um. I'm good. And so that handles that. All right, well, uh, we'll move to general public comment. It's three minutes, uh, come on up here, addressed, uh, addressed myself, since I'm acting chairman tonight.
I'm very downstate, I don't know if all you guys know me or not, but anyways, we're in this Bass Lake right away. We've been fighting this since two thousand and sixteen, I don't, you guys all aware of it or no?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we need a, I would like to see a, get a, a letter of recommendation from the, from you guys, because we're warning the court on this for the support to county and for the lawyer there. So that's what I'm mainly here for, you guys give us some support and a letter of recommendation. So I've been using that rule for over fifty years and they're trying to shut it down and it's just, this is not right. And then the county maintain it a half a mile, then it goes down to a, you know, you set your own risk for the next mile. And they don't, the county's owned it since nineteen twenty-nine and they still let the right of way, these two guys are trying to block it off. and they still have to write it with these two guys are trying to block it off. So that's basically what it's all about.
We don't normally, uh, come back with anything, we just let the co, public comment on it, but I was at the road commission meeting, I guess I didn't put that in my report either, but uh, I was at the road commission meeting yesterday and they said that the the, those, those guys up there are offering some kind of a a settlement of some sort. I don't know, I don't know what, any details about it, but.
Not that I'm aware of it, it's still going to court as far as I know.
Okay, well, it was just mentioned at the road commission meeting, because they're the ones that got got in the middle of it to start with.
Yeah, was you were there, Charlie, or no?
No, I wasn't able to be there yesterday morning, but we'll, we'll find out where, where that stands.
But anyways, is there any way we can get a letter of recommendation from you guys? I mean, we got townships and I've got over six hundred vote or signatures on papers and stuff, and I'm really appreciative, get something from you guys. I mean, I don't know what the problem with this is, there's a hundred and twenty acres of state ground there, goes into seven thousand acres of state ground, they're trying to block it off, and at the other end of it, it's all federal property. They're trying to block the whole thing off.
Hold on to the agenda for next week, we'll talk about it again. My name's on that personal name, I, on that.
On this thing is yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't mind personally putting it on there.
Okay, is it, so, are you all, you guys?
I, I think everybody. This is not usually how we do public comment, we usually don't respond to the public, but, um, I believe that everybody on this board signed it.
Okay, so there shouldn't be no problem getting a letter of recommendation from the board, you guys all agree to it, right?
Well, personally, I do. Personally, I do, I just don't think the board needs to be involved in it. I don't, I think it's outside the, the board's realm of duties.
Well, seems like me, you guys wanna give most support you can for the people of, of the county.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
So I gotta say.
Anybody else? One more, doesn't hurt.
Hey, he said it all.
Okay, okay. Sir, you're, you guys are in the same.
You don't wanna put it to a vote, if you wanna give us a letter of recommendation to keep it or or not, I, I'd like to see who's against it and who's for it on the board. Why not put it for a vote? That'd be something.
Well, you've already passed by motions for adoption, so. Wait. We're in public comment. Well, thank you, thank you for your comment. Any, anybody got a comment on the phone? Anybody on the phone? Have a public comment they'd like to make? Any, 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 uh, subject? Okay. Done?
What is that?
Come on up here.
What would the, would the county have any problem if the state wanted to take that section of road over? Because I've talked to the D and I, and they're they're more than anxious to wanna get a hold of that. To make that a trail, what I mean, because that's a main trail out of the Malby Hills. And, uh, yeah, they would be more than interested.
Can I get your name, please?
George Matthews.
I don't know. Personally, I don't have a problem at all with that.
It'd be a road commission question, nothing, there isn't anything that we can do, because we don't have any control over the, over the roads. Again, this is not normally how we do public comment. Ordinarily, the public comments and we don't respond to your, we listen to what you have to say. So we're really engaging when ordinarily we wouldn't be, but we understand your passion, I think that's why we're engaging.
I basically think it just comes down to right and wrong though, because if people own on both sides of a road, there's a lot of people in the county could put up a fence and say, well, we're no longer gonna let people go down that road. You know, it's, it's just I, I don't even really understand what the argument is, you know what I'm saying? If that's a, a county road, why would people, because like, we're dense that they own on both sides of the road, they could shut their road off, but put two gates across, you know? It, that is, to me seems not really about argument, it basically comes down to right and wrong. You know what I'm saying? It's, uh.
Okay, I, I know what you're saying, sir, I know what you're saying. I've, I've signed the petition. As a personal resident of the county, I've signed it.
Because I'm seventy, I'm probably, if you've been over it more than them. That used to be when I bought a brand-new dune buggy when I was a young man, I went through there, you know? And, uh, there used to be a lot of us guys guided out of the cedar there with snowmobiles, you know, coming across that, because that's the main. I'm really, I'm really, I told them guys, I'm really surprised just for safety alone that they wouldn't wanna open that because people wouldn't be on Rose City Road and Heath Road. You know, when you come out of there, the second trail going north takes you right to the elk camp. I just took him through there the other day to show, he says, when you come out of that trail, the second one to the north takes you right to the elk camp. You know that, Roger, you know, that's the main trail up to the
Yep.
And, uh, I guess that's all I got to say, it's just funny, you know, it seems like there's just a, a part of being right and wrong. It seems like if everybody had that privilege to shut down a, be owned on both sides of the road. I mean, look how we used to go past your old place, hey, your friends there, I mean, if they, if they wanna put a gate there, we'd have never, never been able to get to length of the road. So.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you get the other gentleman's name?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, we'll close public comment, uh. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Board?
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you. By that was quick, easy.